Good evening, everyone. Time is 6:30 on March 16th. This regular meeting of the mayor and council is now called to order. All council members are present under the roll call. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which this stands in our nation, under God, in the name of the Lord.
Let's pray. Father, we are grateful to gather again and celebrate with actions the event of democracy in a place called America. And, Lord, we just give you thanks for that. We don't acknowledge that often enough, the things of liberty and freedom and the wonder that is in this place that just come so easily to us, Lord. We ask that you'd bless it tonight as people speak, let them be heard, and as action is taken, let it be for the benefit of our citizens in Social Circle and for the development of a community and the protection of liberty and freedom. Lord, we give you thanks for healing, the passing of the pandemic. The, or we just pray that you'll protect those in these last days as vaccines get scattered around, that you'll protect people, keep them healthy, and let our lives bloom again like the spring comes now, Lord. It's a beautiful wonder that you prepare us for your ways, renewal, blooming, and wonder, and back to some normal, Lord. And we just thank you for that. We thank you for that healing and for the springtime and the encouragement it gives, and we ask you to bless us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Have some announcements. Municipal Court, March 17th at 1:00 p.m. in our community room. Planning Commission, March 23rd, 6:00 p.m. at the Middle School Activity Center. Tree Board meets March 25th at 6:00 p.m. in our community room. Our mayor and council retreat with the school board is March 27th at 8:00 a.m. at the high school cafeteria. Our next council work session is April 1st, 6:30 p.m. in the community room. Downtown Development Authority of Social Circle meets on April 8th at 10:00 a.m. in the community room. Main Street Commission meets April 13th at 8:00 a.m. at Church at the Grove. The Georgia Initiative for Community Housing meets April 13th at 10:00 a.m. via Zoom. The Historic Preservation Meeting is April 13th, 6:00 p.m., also in the community room. And our next council meeting is April 20th, 6:30 p.m., and that will be at the Social Circle Theater. Presentations, we have first the Walton County YMCA video overview.
So what we have being prepared is the YMCA Walton video.
Okay, why don't we move on? We seem to be having a little bit of technical difficulty with this one, so maybe we can tee that up later.
All right. The next item we have on the agenda is introductions of new employees.
Adele, can you speak up or maybe take your mask off? I can't, can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. Can you hear me now?
A little better.
Okay.
That works.
All right. So the next item we have is introduction of new employees. We have with the fire department, Zach Etheridge. Zach comes to us from the College Park Fire Department. He's been in the fire service for approximately five years. He has a bachelor's degree from Georgia State College in math, and he has advanced EMT, is firefighter two, hazmat, and apparatus operator. We're really pleased to have Zach join us, and I think he's been with us maybe two weeks now. Also, we have Young Martin, who has joined the finance department. He's providing our communication services. He is a graduate of Georgia Tech with a BS in computer science. He has experience running his own company, the Atlanta Computer Technology Incorporated, and also the IT Division at Pennington Seed. He is also the president of the Social Circle Lions Club and the coordinator for the Lions Club District 18I, and assists with the state Lions Club Information Technology Committee. He's a resident of Social Circle and happy to be with us, and we are happy to have him join.
Thank you. Next up, we have the downtown rundown.
This is the downtown rundown for March. Sorry. Okay. The first item on the rundown is the farmer's market. The farmer's market will officially open next week on Thursday, March 25th at 9:00 a.m. The farmer's market is located in Friendship Park and will operate Thursday through Saturday from 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. Currently, we have four vendors signed up, and we are still accepting applications. What's happening in the circle will start tomorrow. It's a promotion in which we will highlight one to two downtown businesses each day. We are encouraging people to dine and shop the daily highlighted businesses, the businesses, save their receipt, and enter for a drawing and for a $200 gift card. All receipts must be turned in dated 3/17 to 3/25 by noon on Friday, March 26. The drawing will be held before the movie in Friendship Park. I will visit the highlighted businesses each day, and the Easter Bunny will tag along with me and give out prizes to the customers. We are partnering with Church at the Grove for the egg hunts, which will start at 6:00 p.m. on Friday, March 26. They will go from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. We'll have a photo booth with pictures with the Easter Bunny, cotton candy, and popcorn to give away. We'll do the drawing for the gift card at 7:45, and the movie should begin around 8:00 p.m. We partnered with Stanton Memorial Library, and we'll be showing the movie "Hop." Students and their professor, excuse me, were in Friendship Park last Thursday, holding a kite festival to show off the kites they made in their art classes. I had a chance to go by and visit with them, and they had a great afternoon showing off their hard work. I met with a group of gentlemen last week about potentially doing a car show in downtown Social Circle. They are very enthusiastic about making that happen. We have set a potential date for May 1st, and I will be sending out updates to all very soon. Any questions?
Any questions, Fran? Thank you, ma'am. Next item up, we have citizen requests. I don't know of any. Do we have any council requests?
Yeah. Yeah, and Public Works has been out taking a look at that to secure or remove the old stand that the kids were jumping off of, and also to remove the old stands and other elements around the field that are hazardous. So do we have a schedule? Would you like to speak to it, Robbie?
We took the clean down today, the kids were jumping off of that.
Okay.
And we started on the stairs today.
So, and then we're going to be working on the rest, getting it cleaned up. They got a good start on it today, so.
Yeah, the bases are here. We've ordered them, we have them, and Robbie had been working with the Walton County Recreation Department, who had agreed to laser grade the field for us, and so we didn't want to install the bases until that was done. I think she's still been coordinating with them Monday. Do we have anything further on that?
He's gonna, we're gonna have to wait this week.
Because of the rain. And he was gonna come by later, either Friday or maybe early next week to get the bases and help get them installed. Because we've had the bases for a while, we're just trying to get, work with their schedule to get them installed.
It's fine. It's been a lot of, they're playing a lot of basketball down there, and now they're on Facebook, want to go down and start playing kickball and stuff. They're trying to use it, so that's why I have the questions and the concerns about what the kids was jumping off of.
Thank you, Tyson. Anything else? Next up, the agenda approval. I don't know of any additions or modifications, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the consent agenda to take out item number five, move it to the new business. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor indicate saying aye. Need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
A motion, is there a second? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Next item up is a, we have a public hearing. I believe this agenda item has been moved, but I'll ask.
I'll take it if you like.
Yes, please.
I gave Barbara the night off.
Looking for Barbara.
Yeah, I gave her the night off. So this item has been deferred until the next council meeting, which will be April 20th, because the Planning Commission public hearing was deferred until the March 23rd. So Planning Commission will be hearing it next week, and then it will come to the next regular council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next item up, we have the financial statements.
Jennifer Fricks will have those. Yeah, you can either take Susan's or mine.
Okay, so at this point in the year, these are the February financials, so we should be at 58.3%. For our general fund revenues, we're at 84.97%. This time last year, we were at 69.35. For expenses, our overall is at 63.94%. Of that, 114% is capital, and 61.94% of our operating expenses have been used. This time last year, we were at 69.87%. For water, we're at 51.8% in revenue. Of that, 20.39% is chief alone. I believe we have more of that coming in March, or later this month, and 70.53% of regular revenues. Our expenses are at 41.16%, or, I'm sorry, our revenues last year were at 41.16% at this point. Our expenses are at 61.49 overall. Of that, 93.15% is capital, 47.1% is operating, and this time last year, we were at 39.39%. Our gas revenue is at 59%. This time last year, it was at 57.5. Our expenses are at 67.73%. Of that, 82.86% is capital, 64.35% is operating. This time last year, we were at 56.23%. And then for solid waste, our revenues are at 67.38. This time last year, we were at 66.99%. Our expenses were at 57.18%, and this time last year, they were at 58.14. Does anybody have any questions?
Normal temperature.
All right. Thank you.
I get a motion to approve the financials for February.
So moved.
A motion, second. Motion from Councilmember Shelton, second from Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item up is the consent agenda. Item number five of that consent agenda is the consideration of a beer and wine pouring license for 151 East High Tower Trail. I possibly have financial interest in that since I do own that building, so I'll recuse myself from voting or from the consent agenda and ask Ms. Price to handle that.
May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a second.
Second.
You have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Are there any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes, have it.
All right. Next item up, old business. We have board and commission appointments, if there are any to be made. Start off in order of the boards where we have vacancies or reappointments necessary. Cemetery committee.
I know we've been keep bringing this up. I would like to see it brought to a work session. Maybe let's go by board by board to see where we at and give it a little time to look at it and see where we at on it, because I know we have a couple of boards that, um...
Some of these, we probably could handle, because some of them's going to reserve anyway, right?
That's right. And, for example, this cemetery board.
And I was just saying that some of the other boards, like the Main Street Board, I would like to see who's coming to the meetings and not coming to the meetings as well. Because we don't, we're not getting that down and make sure they're reporting to the meeting before we just go through it.
Cemetery committee, we can go ahead and reappoint them, right?
You can.
I make a motion to reappoint all the ones willing to serve back to the cemetery committee.
Okay, we have a motion, Councilmember Shelton, and a second from Councilmember Jackson. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Downtown Development Authority, we're going to wait on that one, or?
I want to, I'm like, I want to say who's killing it.
Okay. Okay. Historic Preservation Commission.
I make a motion to reappoint. Is Lambert going to, there's a store beside her, is she going to re...
Yes, she's been.
Okay. I make a motion to reappoint Tom Brown and Cornelia Lambert.
Okay, we have a motion for the HPC to reappoint Tom Brown and Cornelia Lambert. That's from Mr. Shelton, second, from Councilmember Jackson. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry if Susan has asked me, and I'm sure I'm guilty of this as well. Please turn your mics on and speak, speak into the mics. They're kind of sensitive. I don't, I don't know if everyone can hear us or not. Housing Authority, that is an appointment by the mayor. There is a vacancy and one person to be potentially reappointed. I'd like, I'd like to appoint Connie Hector for a five-year term beginning January of this year, '21. There is a vacant position there. I would like to appoint Mamie Phillips for that vacancy, and I'll ask for a motion from the council to approve those appointments.
Did you check, when you talked, you said something to me about that the other day. Did you check, make sure Ms. Mamie can serve on what?
She can. Tony verified that she can serve. She also serves on the Development Authority. The only board we have restrictions of serving is the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I have spoken with the, with these applicants.
Oh, um, making a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Jackson, second from Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, Tyson, you said you wanted to wait on the Main Street. Social Circle Development Authority and the Tree Board, but it doesn't look like we have any.
On the Planning Commission, I'll make a motion to reappoint Valerie, how you say that last name? Huh? Walhart?
Second.
Okay, she's, we have a motion from Councilmember Shelton, a second from Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
And also, Steve, I will ask you, she's currently serving a two-year term, and that's a four-year term, so you're making that appointment for four years.
Yeah, they all supposed to go to four years.
Yeah, it's supposed to go to four years.
But they still will be stacking.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. That will go to a four-year.
Yeah, she, she was appointed to stagger the terms. We just gave her a two-year appointment, so this appointment is a four-year appointment. Okay, I think that completes all of the, all of the current boards. We'll add, add the other ones to our lengthy work session in, in April to have discussion on the other. And just to clarify, all members that are currently serving on the board unless appointed or reappointed replacements, they continue to serve until someone is appointed for that All right, the next item under old business is a code amendment to remove conflicting debris from our ordinance.
So the city, this was discussed briefly at our work session. The city has adopted the property maintenance code. The property maintenance code includes provisions against allowing the collection of brush debris and rubbish that will harbor rodents. That's a paraphrase. However, the city code currently has a provision that allows stacking branches into brush piles for use as a wildlife habitat. So that's a direct conflict, and so the staff recommends deleting that specific conflicting sentence. And the ordinance that you have attached in the packet simply deletes that sentence. I have information from Chief Adele and the code inspector that there are no pending violations on this specific, so there's, nobody would be affected immediately by this.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Shelton, second from Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate to say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Under new business, we have a alcohol ordinance amendment.
We spoke about this briefly at the, the work session. What, what caused this specific amendment proposal is that we got audited by the GBI about a month ago, and auditor found some, some practices that we were doing relating to fingerprinting of, of waitresses and bartenders in the city, and that we were not allowed to do that unless approved by the GBI, unless our ordinance was specifically approved by the GBI and the FBI. And the auditor told us that there was no law mandating that we fingerprint these, the waitresses and bartenders. The only mandate by Georgia law is to fingerprint the license holders, alcohol license holders. So after speaking with Susan and the GBI agent who helped us, and the chief, and Kathy over at the police department who does the fingerprinting, we rewrote the ordinance to make it clear on what the police department is supposed to do regarding fingerprinting of waitresses and bartenders. And so that is our amendment here. And the, this is a, this is a flaw throughout the current alcohol ordinance, is that there was three different sections within the liquor pouring license that related to employees. So we brought all of those together so that there would be some consistency that the police department and employees of these alcohol license carriers can look at one place to know what they're supposed to and not supposed to do. That's the ordinance in front of you. It's just relating to cleaning up the GBI's request from our audit. That's the ordinance in front of you. It's just relating to cleaning up the GBI's request from our audit.
Thank you, Jay. Any questions on this?
So this ordinance, exactly what's in it is saying that we can't fingerprint?
It's taking, so the, what is currently written now require, or it has a prohibition on a license, alcohol license holder from hiring anyone that has a felony within the last 10 years. And after talking with the Police Department and the GBI, the only way to do that is fingerprinting. And so what we are requiring them to do is just to run a Georgia background check, which I understand can be just run internally at the Social Circle Police Department and doesn't have to be sent off to the GBI and FBI. And so that'll bring back a Georgia background check. So if there's anything that they've done, a felony or anything that pops up in Georgia, that will be found. But if, I guess if something happened in California, it won't be. But it, so, yeah.
Any other question? I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the alcoholic ordinance amendment.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Price, second from Councilmember Shelton. Get it right in a minute. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item up, we have the 21-22 Capital Improvement Plan Presentation.
Thank you. This is a part of the annual budget process that usually starts in January with the council retreat and then moves on through work sessions and into the actual public hearing and adoption of the budget and the mill rate. So it's a six-month process overall. So where we are right now is the presentation of the recommended capital improvement plan. The council has heard from their boards and commissions. They've heard from the department heads. The last piece of your January retreat is, has been scheduled for March 27th where you'll have a joint retreat with the Board of Education. And then moving forward from this evening's presentation, there will be a work session on key operating budget issues at your next work session. Opportunity for public comment on what is being presented this evening at your next regular meeting on April 20th. And that will also be the time at which the operating budget in total is presented. And then additional work sessions and public hearings in May and June for the ultimate adoption of the mill rate and budget at your June 15th regular meeting. So the capital improvement plan is a five-year plan. We re-present it every year and it is the five-year recommendations are adjusted each year, but the first year of that capital improvement plan becomes a part of your adopted annual budget. So the difference between a capital improvement plan and the operating budget is the capital improvements are typically your one-time expenditures, which are new facilities or infrastructure improvements or equipment purchases. Whereas the operating budget is the repeated annual costs of personnel, utilities, fuel and supplies. Capital improvement plan is important to have to maintain investment in your infrastructure and to assure that the city's physical plant is being constructed and replenished as necessary to support the desired city growth. So the capital improvement plan includes the SLOST-funded projects, general fund, water and sewer fund and gas fund. The needs for the capital improvement plan come from those identified in the city's comprehensive plan, from the mayor and council input over the course of the year, as well as their strategic goals, which are adopted every two years, from the water and sewer and gas master plans, from department head operational and regulatory insights, from the boards and commissions and from citizens through the year. So for the 2019 through 2025 SLOST, that was a total of $2.895 million anticipated. Of that, and you see the initial allocation that was on the ballot in the first column for category, second column. Of that, what's been expended in each area is in the middle column and what is remaining is on the far right. So in transportation funding, we have three, a little over $300,000 remaining to spend. Little over $100,000 in public safety, $185,000 in building upgrades, $50,000 remaining in parks and recreation and 1.1 million in water and sewer infrastructure. Based on balancing the requests and needs for these capital projects from what the general fund and the water and sewer fund can support versus the intention for the SLOST, our five-year recommended projects are shown on the screen. And I won't go through all of them, but I will highlight the first year or the 21-22 year recommendations. And they include match funds for our local maintenance and improvement grant for roadway work, $30,000 for roadway drainage improvements, $35,000 for a police car replacement. And then in the building upgrades category, $90,000 to fully fund the City Hall roof that is out for bid right now, as well as replacement of the alarm and camera system. And if we are cost-effective enough, enough to support a small storage shed for the signs that are, and things that are stacked under the stairway. Also, there is $45,000 recommended in the first year for the welcome center roof, window and drainage repairs. Those were items that you heard about at the last work session. Just looking forward a little bit, there is $50,000 recommended for the council chamber improvement and the Police Department generator replacement. And that is pushed out a year because we would like to see the Walton County Recreation Center completed and see how that will affect the current uses of our community room, which hopefully will free up some space for these improvements to enable the room to be more efficient. Then the majority of the first year funding or next year funding, 21-22 funding from SLOST is recommended in water and sewer infrastructure. The Goodyear Interceptor, which is a project Jay is currently working on, which would eliminate the Goodyear pump station. The Brookstone Interceptor, which would eliminate the Brookstone pump station and match for the CDBG Mill Village project. So that is the recommended CIP projects under the SLOST fund. Moving forward into the general fund, the council will recall typically we have almost no funding for general fund capital projects. This year, the general fund revenues have increased over what we projected. Of course, as you may recall, we projected a very tight budget this year as we were anticipating some pretty severe pandemic impacts. Fortunately, and as you saw in the financial reports, we are right on track, actually a little better than projected in our general fund revenues and we are holding the line in our expenditures. So the city is doing very well in the general fund. But it is worth noting that the increases in revenue are largely in sales tax and building permits. So those can be extremely variable from year to year. So that increase is very appropriate to put towards capital projects, which are one year versus continuing every year needs. This CIP is based on an assumption of no millage rate increase. And again, the council's discussion of some of these topics is scheduled in detail for the next work session. So if council wishes to adjust any of these assumptions in putting together the operating budget, we can certainly do that. But the assumptions that these project funding levels are based on is no millage rate increase, that we would continue the pilot or payment in lieu of taxes from the utility funds at the current rates. They do, as you are aware, support lower millage rates. That's basically a franchise fee from your city utilities to your general fund. It is also important to note, as you are aware, that the general fund does rely on these revenues from the water and sewer and gas fund to maintain services at the current level with your current millage rate. It is happy to note after the last audit that the general fund balance is right at, very near the target levels established by council. So that's good. We don't want to cut into that. We want to maintain that. And so the balance of the funding available then for capital projects that I am recommending is prioritized to the equipment replacement schedule. And as the council is aware, you all have spent months looking at equipment replace, equipment inventory value and the equipment replacement schedule to bring your general fund equipment up to a regular replacement schedule so that the equipment can be operated reliably and without excessive maintenance costs. So there were many more projects identified. You heard many of them at the work session that are needed and they are included in the deferred list. So we still have more needs than we are available, than we have funding available. So in terms of what is recommended for funding, this chart indicates it and I won't go through every project. I will just note that it is essentially all equipment replacement and well-needed replacement, as well as Scott airbags for the fire department, which is also replacement. So some of the vehicles you see that we're replacing are 2006, 2008. And then in the later years, we have some of the more recently purchased equipment, 2018, for example. Police cars, we're doing well to get five or six years out of. The problematic Dodge that we've talked about in brush and leaf is scheduled for replacement in this upcoming year. So the total of funding recommended for equipment replacement in the first year in the general fund is $180,000. And then as you see across the balances between, needed for each year is between 70 and $200,000. So the list of deferred projects is lengthy and I, it's important to keep these in your budget so that the council is aware and the community is aware that there are still unfunded needs at some point that will need to be addressed. And we will talk later about other funding resources that might be available for them. So I won't go through all of these, but I will just note some of the significant ones are the platform ladder truck. Downtown improvements you heard about at the last work session. Replacement of additional fire equipment you heard about. The Police Department expansion, just a study is one of those deferred needs. Flashing crosswalk lighting has been requested for the, particularly the area in front of the high school, middle school. So that project has been estimated, but it's deferred. Downtown parking area expansion is on this deferred list, as well as sidewalk rehabilitation and expansion and trail and greenway expansion and watershed and storm system mapping, master plan and then implementation. So there's a significant amount of needed yet deferred projects. In the water and sewer fund, in putting together the capital project recommendations, we maintained the continued 2.5% annual rate increase that was established three or four years ago in your utility rate study in projecting going forward. We also have included a continued borrowing for capital projects of approximately 2 million per year in the water and sewer fund through this five years. This does also reflect the CDBG grant of $750,000 that was awarded for the Mill Village sewer improvements and the city's match for that. And also, we have included a proposed, we hope, CDBG award for the Marco Estates utility improvements in fiscal year 23-24. We've also included proposed use of capital recovery funds for capital projects that increase capacity. So as the council is aware, every time there is a new connection, like a building permit or a new industry or basically a new first-time connection into the water fund or sewer fund, that customer pays a capital cost recovery to account for the value of the capacity in the system that they are using. So those funds are reserved for projects that increase capacity. So you can have future customers connect into capacity. So projects in your capital improvement plan that provide capacity are proposed with use of those funds. And finally, I have not included the $18 million wastewater treatment plant replacement funding pending the council's approval of the funding approach, which is anticipated to be at your next work session. So in the water and sewer fund, again, I'm not going to go through each of these projects individually. They do come out of the water master plan that was completed, as well as the sewer master plan that was completed. It does include, you know, our core, continuing our core water main replacements and sewer improvements that eliminate pump stations. Also includes some significant water plant improvements in the first year. For example, there is $1.4 million recommended for water plant electrical upgrades and other equipment. Sounds like it's raining a lot. And then also in the second year, we have $1.2 million recommended for the filter rehabilitation. So the water plant upgrades that the consultant has recommended to put us in good shape for the next 20 years or so are included in those first two years. We also have included, I wanted to highlight the CDBG funding, which I mentioned in the assumptions for the Mill Village, CDB grant funds. And then also a water main extension on Clover Drive, which would ultimately connect from West High Tower to the back of Windsong. So there is 225,000 recommended for the first leg of that, which would be from West High Tower into where the new homes are under construction. In addition, we have included some maintenance projects that have been identified by staff and that you heard about last at the work session. Funding to address with capital projects recurrent maintenance needs. We also have a project recommended to replace our pump station SCADA system with cellular improved technology. And then continuing an annual galvanized water main replacement program, which is going to be even more important as the lead and copper rules tighten up. And fire hydrant and valve replacements. And then finally, continuing on our theme of completing the equipment replacement schedule or funding annually the equipment replacement according to the schedule, we have the water and sewer equipment and vehicles included herein. And again, I just want to highlight, for example, the equipment that's proposed to be replaced in the first year includes a 2004 F-350 and a 2012 F-250. So our crews have gotten a lot of life out of those vehicles. And we want to make sure that we put our staff in a good position to have reliable equipment so they can provide reliable services. In the gas fund, we do have a healthy fund balance. It does meet the target and the gas fund is financially stable. However, as the council is aware, significant gas revenue is used to support the general fund as part of that franchise fee payment to the general fund. And that does cut into the amount of funding that's available for system improvements. Currently, city residential and commercial gas. Currently, city residential and commercial gas rates, both, are the lowest in the region. We've done a rate comparison, and we are recommending that the gas rates be increased in this upcoming budget. We have not, in the capital plan in front of you, we haven't assumed that to be the case, but we will be recommending it, and that will be on your agenda for discussion at the April work session. And that, if the council elects to increase the gas rates, again, we are the lowest in the region in both residential and commercial industrial. But if those rates are raised, that would enable greater investment in the city's gas system and enable us to accomplish the projects that will be identified as the gas master plan is completed. So, the recommended projects are for the five-year plan are on the screen before you. In the first year, again, I want to highlight the completion of the gas meter replacement so that we can complete our radio read conversion. And I did not mention this, but funding is also included in the water system in the first year to complete the water meter radio read replacement program. So, both water and gas will be completed if the CIP is adopted by the end of next year. Also, we've included a gas system ATV, which was mentioned by the department head in the work session in order to assist, enable them to more efficiently check the gas line rights of way for leaks, which is an annual requirement. We have funding included for equipment replacement, continuing theme, and also a compressor replacement, and also funding set aside for gas system extensions and improvements. And that is, I just do want to highlight, that's not a significant amount of funding each year. That's basically one typical residential project that we have been doing each year. So, yet another reason to consider a gas rate increase to enable us to stay out in front of our gas system customer demands. And that concludes the presentation of the capital improvement plan. It is, as I mentioned, scheduled for public comment at the next regular council meeting, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have. Page one or page two? That one? That one? That one? We'll have to check that number. That was the number on the schedule. All right. That's an important difference. We'll, we'll take a look at that. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. We'll take a look at that. Okay, anything else?
Any other question? All right, moving on. Item number three, marijuana ordinance amendment.
Chief Brinkley, would you like to address the council, or be prepared for questions, I guess, for the council? This, this amendment in front of you was prepared in response to the council's work session of last, the last work session. It basically addresses a defect in the wording of the current city code provision. And if, and as you're aware, the solicitor and the police chief discussed this at your work session. The solicitor provided his recommendations to the city attorney, which led to the ordinance that is drafted in, in your packet. If adopted, this amendment would address that defect in the current code and would enable our police officers to issue a citation under the local city ordinance for possession rather than the state code when appropriate. And the when appropriate is important to emphasize, as the chief stressed, that the officer still has discretion. When the situation warrants, they can write a citation under the state code. And with that, the chief would be happy to answer any further questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Brinkley?
Yeah, I've read over it. The only thing that I'm looking at, that we're still doing a thousand dollar fines and could be, they can go to, or probation if they don't pass the fine. I talked to Monroe, they're looking at doing a flat $200, $250 fine straight out and saying no probation, just basically like you're giving somebody if they get caught with it, like you're giving them a speeding ticket. And that'd, take so many people having come to court, they don't have to come to court for it, they choose to pay the fine, they know how much it is, and they're done with it, opposed to a thousand dollar fine and possible probation and all that, because it still can warrant, when they get to the solicitor, he can give you probation and all that at that rate.
We will enforce what you all approve. Only different with the officer charging under the
The influence, I understand.
To the code.
Yes.
Sight and release. Now, example, if a officer gets out with a person downtown in the business district being suspicious at 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning, and they interviewed the person, consensual encounter, they find marijuana on this person less than ounce, they can cite him or her on that, obviously the code, and release. Same scenario, exact same scenario, this particular individual has burglarized a business downtown in a, in a vehicle. That person will be charged under the state code with that burglary in or auto along with the possession of marijuana, which will be fingerprinted and arrested and booked into the jail. And it will show up on his or her criminal history in the future.
Yeah, I understand that. That's, like I said, I'm, if they're doing something else along with it, or if they're riding down the road smoking, and you catch them that way, then I know they could be charged under the influence and all that. And, and that's what I'm saying, but I'm looking, like I said, I'm, I'm just trying to protect the younger folks that making mistakes in life, that we don't pass that mistake that they made one time with them the rest of their life, is what I'm looking more so. That's why I'm trying to get the fines, a reasonable fine, because if you tell a young person a thousand dollars, you can't pay a thousand dollars, then he's going to be in the system. And everything that we did is just there, you know?
I concur. Speeding ticket, casing park, sight and release. Red light, sight and release, stop sign, sight and release. So, we can, we can operate the same under the city code, under section nine dash three, if we do it like that. Again, if that person is involved in another type crime DUI for instance, burglary in or auto, some kind of criminal damage to property, he or she can be charged under the state code along with their possession if they have it, which will be fingerprinted. The, without the other entities, that individual recited and released, would not be booked, would not be arrested, would not be fingerprinted, would not be, he is, they would not end up, that particular child won't end up on their criminal history.
Refresh my memory, but didn't the solicitor say under the first offender, they give them a first offender, and then they still try to work with them to reduce their fines before they get to this point?
Yes.
Would that still work the same way under this?
It, under the local ordinance issue it.
But he says if he chooses to. He didn't say he has to. He said if he chooses to. So, if he walk, if, if he choose to give that person that, he can, but if he choose not to, then he don't have to, is what he said.
That's right, but that, what he's talking about, Dick, you know, the other circumstances may go along with it would be the choose not to, because their practices have been under what he told us was, is that their practice?
But under the officer, it wouldn't even be written up under the state code if the, the local code, if the officer sees he has other stuff to it. So, when the solicitor gets it, it would already be up under the state code and not the local code, so that'd put away the choosing to give somebody the nolo or something, right?
And, and the city attorney can jump in on this. If the defendant can ask for a first offender or something, and it's granted through the solicitors, to the office, they might even get it that way.
And I don't think that distinction is, I think it, it's, it's getting applied, as the solicitor said, even their citations in state code. I think that's not a distinction. I think you're fixing your local ordinance from a technical standpoint tonight. And what we promised was, Monroe has an idea about maximum sentencing that they were going to impose, and we're going to bring that to you at the work session as soon as we get a copy of it, so that we can at least get something in front of you that answers Mr. Jackson's concerns about discretion on those first sentencing situations.
Yes, thank you. This new amendment defines the, prescribes the crime that's going on, first to the last one, did not, it says, okay, if you charged with less than ounce of marijuana here in the city of social circle, your case can be hurried. This new amendment states it is unlawful to possess marijuana here in social circle and less than ounce.
It went to state court before and other courts, it's going to municipal court now? Went to state court before, it's going to municipal court now? If y'all write it under this order?
It won't go to the state court, it'll right from municipal court.
That's what I'm saying. It'd come before y'all, if you write it under this order.
Yes, yes.
But it had been coming through us.
No, it'd been going straight to state court.
No, it had been going to state court.
They wrote, a lot of cases got dismissed because they were written under the old amendment. I mean, under the old code, which was not, no good, because it did not prohibit not possession, it said if you were charged with it. So, it's a language change there.
So, this city ordinance, I just want to make sure I understand this. So, this city ordinance, as we're considering now, we're saying that if they get caught with less than an ounce, they're, they get a fine, or that's not the case?
This city ordinance, it prescribes the
It just outlined the details?
Yes.
City ordinance doesn't, doesn't change the sentencing, is simply correcting a defect in the local ordinance that said, that makes it a crime. It's, it's going to be a crime no matter what you do tonight.
Right, right.
It's just going to be, is your, is your local ordinance enforceable? That's all you're doing. You're correcting that enforceability. You're not changing sentencing, you're not changing what happens to kids. You got a good report at the work session that it was being handled, you know, in discretion in a good way. But this is just a technicality that's being fixed. And then, and then there is, and there is a bigger issue that I think is, is Councilman Jackson's concern, and that is, it would be nice not to have so much discretion in first offenders, and you could tighten that down. That'll come back before you, but this one is simply a technical change to change a few words that make it absolutely a crime instead of insinuating that it might be a crime. And so, that's, this one is really just a technical change.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you, chief. Okay, we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second?
Motion from Councilmember Shelton, second from Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion passes. There is one spelling correction that I see on here that we need to fix. Item number four, we move the approval of Housing Study Consulting Services with KB Advisory Group. Discussion on that item.
I just want to, I just want to understand exactly why, well, I didn't like the price, for number one. I thought it was high. But exactly what are they going to be doing?
They're doing two, well, three things primarily. First, they're assisting to facilitate the meetings of the Planning Commission and whatever other group, be it city council. Right now, they're scheduled to come to the Council Board of Education work session, retreat also. So, facilitating those discussions to help pull from that the desired housing strategy. Secondly, they're delving into the data analysis about housing incomes, age of housing, demand for housing, all of that, the statistics and data that are available now specifically for social circle. So, that, that's the big middle piece. And then, thirdly, they're going to pull together the conclusions of that that come from the data analysis and those discussions into more succinct verbiage that the council can consider to adopt into the comprehensive plan to refine the housing strategy. And, and just to back up, the reason we're even embarking down this path, two reasons. One was that when we applied for our CHIP grant, Community Housing Improvement Program grants, that the city is on a good footing to receive as a GIC member, we, that is a program for federal funding that would flow through the city to what we had applied for, qualifying low-income homeowners to improve the homes they own. So, we had applied for that, and we did not receive that grant, and the feedback that we got is that our comprehensive plan housing strategies were silent as to why we needed to do that, what the data was that supported that. So, one need for this is we needed to address that. We know we have that need, but it's not, the data, the analysis, and the support for that is not in the city's current comprehensive plan. So, to get to those funds, it needs to be. And then, the second purpose is to, in a bigger picture, take a look at the direction in the comprehensive plan for where and what type of housing needs the city has, and make sure that the plan is directing or visioning, providing the appropriate policy strategic direction. So, this is professional services we needed to get to that point, because we just don't have the capability to do it in-house, and we wanted to make sure we had that outside third-party objective data analysis and listening ear to facilitate those discussions, bring to us what the data is showing, and bring it to a recommended conclusion, which would then be subject to Planning Commission and Council action.
Is this going to hurt us in anything we got going on?
No, the, we're, we're watching closely, and it's, the citizen input is really helpful. The consultant has to follow that input. That's the whole purpose of it, is to, is to find out your community and then, and then give instruct. There are things that the consultant can add to the picture in a lot of areas that, that are important to be decided, and, but you're, it's really a very effective process, very timely and very helpful, and we're, we're going to be watching closely to make sure that the answers to the questions, it's, it's, it's big stuff. It's, it's single-family residential in that blend, it's, it's affordable housing in that blend, and one that's really critical is, is multifamily in that blend and locations. And so, we're, we're right there with the Planning Commission and hearing really good input coming into, and good, good advice from that consultant. And we're, we're, we're going to be close with it to make sure that And, uh, we're, we're, we're going to be close with it to make sure that the recommendations, and the fact that it's being done the way it's done, in context with, with other funding mechanisms and bigger plan, is serendipitous, but it's, but it's pretty wonderful, that it's very timely.
I'm looking at the cost of it. It seems like a lot to, to determine if we need housing, and, and where do we need housing. I mean, I see where they work, and the cities that they work in, it's just, I mean, that's, that's a lot to, to come up on and bring back to the people that we spent, you know, $14,000 on trying to figure out where we, what do we need.
So, and, I, I certainly understand that. One piece of it is listening, and of course, you, you all have seen the survey and the survey results, but it, it's also important with the conclusions that are reached, that there is data supporting those conclusions, and we really need help to get that. And that is going to strengthen where you end up at the end. Also, we, I, I agree, the initial proposal and numbers that we were looking at in talking to folks about how much they spent for this sort of thing was on the order of 40-plus thousand dollars. So, this was negotiated down to exactly what we thought we needed. And I will also say, you know, just looking at some of the prior studies done by the city, when we were looking at the Opportunities Zone renewal, the background of that, the redevelopment plan, there was upwards of $50,000 spent on that. So, these kinds of services are not inexpensive. And with that background and how we structured this, we made a lot of effort, and I think came to a very fair, yet skinny budget, fair for the, the scope that we needed and not more, and a budget that reflected that.
How long is this process going to take?
It's scheduled to be completed within two months. So, we've had the first work session at the Planning Commission. As I said, the council will be at and presenting the, um, us, uh, some of the background research that is, um, trends around us, demographic trends, at the board and city council retreat, and mostly will be listening to that facilitated discussion at the board and city council retreat as part of that, assimilating the input. And then, they will come back to, sorry, they will come back to an April 19th Planning Commission work session with the data and analysis specific to Social Circle, and then would complete their work by the end of April.
Thanks to, it, it's, it's an, to have a well-written housing plan is a key ingredient to defending your zoning ordinance and your zoning decisions. And so, we, if done correctly, and we know, we know we're spending, we know it's a significant amount, if done correctly, it just, it, you know, puts in place a plan that we can defend, and, and without spending a lot of resources to do it, as long as, as long as you guys agree with it and follow it, and it's logically well-written, and it, it incorporates in it affordable housing that's, that's sort of open in a way to, to, to be fair to people, but it gets it done in a way that you pre-plan rather than post-plan, and then we can enforce it. And, and it answers a lot of questions, gives us a defense. And so, we're, we're really interested in it, because we don't like fighting over these issues. So, if we do it correctly, with a good, good company and a good resolve, then, then it just saves us a whole bunch more than $14,000 in attorney's fees later on, so.
Any more discussion or debate? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Price, second from Councilmember Jackson. All those in favor indicate, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. There is no need for an executive session tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.